So we do have a presentation supervisor. I'm Sheila Williams, Chief Deputy Over Administration for the LA County Probation Department. So as you know, we discussed before when DHR and we were here before you that we are focusing on six metrics and data points in terms of how we are doing with our recruitment efforts. And so these are the same ones that we discussed the last time we were here. And so I'll jump right into those metrics. So right now, one of the things we did add was the number of applications that we've been receiving. As you can see, our baseline year is 2021. We had a significant increase in the number of applicants in 2024 due to our aggressive recruitment efforts and hiring of an outside consultant. We did pivot to a new classification as part of our efforts to recruit and streamline the number of our entry level positions. So we switched from our detention service officer position and GSN to a DPO1 item. And so that's why you're currently seeing a change in the number of applicants that we are receiving right now. And this is just through the first three quarters. And right now, that number is 4,353. After work by my HR staff and going through those applications and tried to determine who are exactly qualified for the position of DPO1, we have made approximately 1,161 contingent offers. The background passing rate, as you can see, in 2021, we were at 10.7%. We saw a significant increase in the number of applicants that are passing. And right now, based on the first three quarters, we're down to 9.5%. However, the chief is of the opinion that more stringent we are in terms of those that we pass, those that we deem qualified, a much more successful candidate that we'll have at the end of the process, and hopefully those that we are able to retain because we are struggling with some retention issues.
I'm sorry, what is your retention issue? I mean, what is the percentage right now?
So you'll see, it's one of the slides going further. We did it based on numbers rather than a percentage, but it's one of the slides further in the presentation. So total hires right now, we're at about 53. Once again, we switched from recruiting for our detention service officer, our GSN positions, and hiring now for DPO1s. So we saw a slight dip in the number of applicants or that we brought on board. But as we move further in the process, we're hoping that that number will see, start to see an increase in the number of folks that we bring on board. Time to hire. Once again, the time to hire has slightly increased to 327 days. One of the things that we want to note for the supervisors is that an applicant may have some issues or in terms of they have to respond to our document requests. So let's say we ask them to provide proof that they actually have a bachelor's degree. That amount of time that it takes for them to go to their university, get that information, and then provide it back to us, that's completely outside of our control. But it's part of the timeline or part of the days that it takes to hire and onboard an applicant. Also, if an applicant has some significant issues during the background check process, that can also lengthen the process. So what you see here is an average of all applicants. And for most parts, most individuals are being able to clear, as you can see in quarter three, by 264 days. But when you average out all applicants, the number is reflected, it's 327. Academy graduation rate, a slight dip from 2024 to 81%, but once again, we're trying to be more stringent in terms of those that we actually bring on board because the hope is that we have a much more successful candidate that stays with us longer during the retention So turnover supervisor Barger, this is the slide that reflects our turnover rate. As you can see, that that number has decreased. We had somewhat of a steady between 23 and 24. And right now, during the first three quarters of 2025, we've only lost 20 applicants.
Do you do an exit interview?
Yes, we do. We do an exit interview. We collect the reasons that folks provide. Obviously, it's done on a volunteer basis, and so not everyone participates in the process, but we do track that information.
What is the reason? What's the number one reason, would you say?
The number, it was people leaving to go to other county jobs, people leaving due to working conditions, people leaving because they're moving out of state. It's a long list of things, but what I can do for you is get you the ones that are the most high.
That we have control over. I can't control someone leaving the state. Working conditions, I'd be curious.
Yeah. So once again, we share with you all the different things that we're doing with respect to our recruitment practices in order to increase the number of applicants and candidates that we see. This is that same information that I believe we provided in the past, all the different things that we have been working on along with our outside consultant as well as with Examples of our recruitment ads that you would see throughout LA County. Once again, different recruitment ads. And so once again, we're focusing on recruiting for the DPO1. We currently have that job posting that has, like I mentioned before, started in November of 2024. We're also doing the lateral DPO1 where we're offering a 24K hiring bonus. And then we recently posted for the DPO2 field lateral position, initially starting off with a 24K hiring bonus, and now we've updated it to a 36K hiring bonus over two years.
Stand by. Hold that thought until supervisor Horvath gets back.
Okay.
We don't have a quorum. Talk amongst yourselves. Well, actually, let the record reflect that now Dr. Galley came up and Lisa Garrett from Human Resources is here. Okay, we're going to take a three-minute recess. I know. Yeah, that's okay. We'll do recesses. All right. Yeah.
Okay, as I was saying, we are recently posted a lateral job posting for our deputy probation officer two, and we updated that with a recruitment bonus of 36K over two We recently received approval in October for posting of our supervising deputy probation officer position. And once again, this will be a lateral, and we'll be offering a 48,000 hiring bonus. That's it. Any questions?
Well, I'm going to start off, and this doesn't have to do with recruiting, but you know, one of the frustrations I have, and I know that the request was to continue this matter, but I want to find out what programming is taking place at Berry Nidorf and who's doing the programming. And then I want to see if it's actually happening. Because I'm hearing that time and time again, even programs that we asked for, Sheila, whomever it is that the gatekeeper out there is, is not doing their job. And I'm just going to tell you that. And if they want to come down here and dispute me on it, I have the facts to back up what I'm saying. So I'm asking that we, that we collectively, you, me, Guillermo, go out there
Okay.
and check it out. Because when I was out there and I see kids watching TV on a beautiful day, when they should be outside, being able to recreate. And when I ask why not, it's because there's no programming in place, it makes my blood boil.
Understand.
And especially since I know this has been, and believe me, I'm not shooting the messenger because I know you are here and I appreciate you being here, but I'm calling it out now because I've sat back and tried to allow the system to fix itself. Because I figured that if a supervisor witnessed it, they would fix it. Silly me. And that in and of itself makes me nervous as well, because if they know that we know, what else don't we know that they're doing that we may not be able to see? So I'm just calling out Berry Nidorf leadership, and I hope they're listening. Because fun and games are over for them.
Understand.
All right? And I'm specifically calling out Berry Nidorf. Because when I hear what's going on at LP and they're being transferred over there and they're being housed without proper oversight, we are setting these youth up for failure. And so I want top-of-the-line staff to do what I do, and that is stop by unannounced and walk through. And I expect, and actually, I don't want to bring into motion, but I'm going to look to all of you, and I'm going to say that at least once a month, I am asking, if not done, I will order that to occur. Because again, leadership staff at Berry Nidorf needs to be called on the map, and I'm calling them on the map. All right? And you don't have to answer other than to just say thank you, because I don't want to put, yeah, I don't want to put you in that position because it's really up to the probation officer to address that issue. And you know, I would do the same charge to all department heads. It's not that far away. It's an easy drive, right off the 210 freeway. And if you need a ride, I will drive you. But it's very eye-opening when you go out there and you see for yourself what is occurring. It's kind of like I equated supervisor Horvath with when we deal with the homeless issue at LSA. When we go out to these homeless projects and we see what's going on, but then we hear on paper what they're telling us is happening, the two do not mesh. And so I challenge all of us collectively, including this board, to be present at our facilities. So with that, supervisor Horvath?
Thank you. I recall in the state of emergency motion that the chief was directed to be onsite once a week, so I don't think, you know, I appreciate that you're calling for once a month, but I think that's already been directed. And I think the issue is, you know, we are challenged in so many different directions in this department that we do need that hands-on and the personal ownership of everyone who is entrusted to be a part of solving this problem. Thank you for being here today. I have to say, I wish, I would see in the presentations, a stronger connection between what's happening in the department and what we consider meaningful progress in terms of the care that we want to see provided to our young people. From my understanding, I'm going to start with staffing and hiring, for the depopulation plan to be successful and to bring LP into compliance, the population there needed to be reduced to about 175. As of the most recent population reports, even assuming the 51 girls and gender expansive youth in custody are moved to Kilpatrick, which I'll get to, that leaves you with about 200 young people still at LP, which is more than the depopulation plan projected. Because staffing and recruiting update here shows no significant jump in progress and the population in the halls and camps isn't going down, it's very clear we're not going to be able to staff our way into compliance. So I will ask what I continue to ask at these presentations. What are we doing to proactively reduce the number of youth in custody?
So I think as part of the depopulation plan, as the chief indicated, the shifting of youth to the other sites was the initial plan. We're also looking very closely at our intake process and procedures, which we had invited the POC also to join in and determine whether or not we were over detaining youth that should not be in our care, and that simply is not the case. But we're doing everything we can on intake diversion, trying to get youth in various placements where they can be taken. I think we submit a report to the board, I want to say every so often regarding the efforts to remove youth out of LP to different placements. And placement tends to be where we have our challenges. Some of the facilities where we do house our youth or seek placement are not willing to come and pick them, or the criteria that they're using to avail themselves of our youth, they're not participating in that process. So it's been a struggle in terms of finding placement for the youth. It's been a struggle in terms of reducing the population other than through our intake procedures and whatever diversion efforts that we have.
For Berry J, the depopulation plan contemplated topping out at around 146 youth. I believe that's on page seven of the depopulation plan. It's now at about 150, and there have been credible rumors suggesting it will go higher. So what is the population at Berry J currently, and what do you believe its maximum is based on the current staffing capabilities?
Well, the goal of the depopulation plan was to have a target of 150. However, we cannot obviously control the number of youth that we have in our care and custody. So the numbers that you see reflected in the depopulation plan was that. It was a point in time. But during the summertime, that's when we see a significant increase in the number of youth that come into custody. Because they're out of school, we see another decline once school begins. So we're always going to have that ebb and flow and dynamics with respect to the number of youth in our care. But the target number at Berry J was 150. The site can actually house more, but as you mentioned, we're still struggling with our staff. And so that will be a challenge to ensure we have a sufficient number of staff to cover the youth that are housed there.
So what would you say, given that you just acknowledged that there can be more youth at that site, do you anticipate there being more? And if so, how many?
Yeah, we would, so once again, yes, there is going to be an ongoing trickle of youth being, who are SYTF recommended, shifting from LP over to Berry J. But we're also continuing our step-down process, either step down onto the site or step down into the community. And so when we looked at our trends, we noted that we were stepping down about four to six youth per month, and then we're bringing in about four to six youth transferring over from LP. So the number should remain fairly static. But if we can increase the number of youth, working with the courts, the D and PD, that can be stepped down into the community, that would be helpful.
And it is my understanding, per the POC, that only one POC commissioner did an intake review and that the commission as a whole has not agreed that the department's intake process is acceptable. So.
But the commissioner that did used to work for the probation department oversaw intake processes, and so was very familiar. And so that's the one that we reached out to because he was the lead on that issue.
Understood. I would think this body would disagree with how, what their position is overall. And as I understand it, probation is now operating three pre-SYTF units at Berry J. But I, my understanding is that BSCC has not approved Berry J to be operating for the predispo youth. Is that correct?
So what they did, they said that, they came out and did an inspection, but not of the predispo side. They did an inspection of the SYTF side. They said the SYTF side had three non-compliance areas. We resolved two of them, one is still pending. And then they came back and said that rather than do a pre-inspection, we're going to do an inspection once you begin to house youth there. And so we've asked them to come back out and do that post-inspection since we're housing youth on the predispo side.
Okay, so they haven't done an inspection to affirm that
That's correct.
having them there is yet approved. And so my staff did go to the facility, and I'm deeply concerned by the reports back as supervisor Barger indicated, that a unit of predispo youth with developmental disabilities had severely limited opportunities for programs, with both the youth and staff reporting that programming was only happening on Saturdays and on Mondays, just two days a week, which I find completely unacceptable. So what are you doing to provide more programming in that unit, and when will it begin?
So supervisor, I'll once again have to get back to both you and supervisor Barger, but from what staff has shared with us, we have a very robust list of programs that are available to the youth. I am saddened to hear that that appears not to be occurring when you actually go out on site. So I will have to get back to you with some further information on that.
The list is robust, the activity is not. And that's the problem, is what we put on paper needs to match what is in practice. And I know that it is not only you who is responsible for that, but as the representative of the department here today, I cannot stress enough how essential that is for, especially for developmentally challenged young people who are entrusted to our care, we should be taking extra, and we're not even, we're not even at the floor yet. It's just really disheartening, given how much time this board spends on the challenges that the department is facing. We're concerned about staffing at Berry J. When specifically asked whether sufficient staff were available, if the population number drifts above 150, a probation manager said to my staff, "We're maintaining," while another offered a sarcastic but telling laugh in response to that comment. And the report that was provided today doesn't suggest a different dynamic, and when Berry J last had this many young people, it was shut down as unsuitable. And this is especially disheartening because I know the department worked very hard to get Berry J into compliance. So to revert back to behavior that we know is unacceptable is even more upsetting. So what are you doing to prioritize diversion and decarceration as we obviously cannot staff our way out of this crisis anytime soon?
No, we cannot. And so once again, we'll continue to work with our partners to work on those types of efforts in respect to diversion, our court partners, that the department does not have the authority to release individuals, so that's something that we have to work with the courts and the DAs and the PD.
My concern is that we are, you know, we are asked to provide solutions to how we are going to make things better. And then all that is happening is shifting the problems from one location to another, and then wash, rinse, repeat is what it feels like. And I find that deeply concerning because while we have deep structural issues that we want to, that we're seeking to address, there are young people in our care right now who need more than they're getting. I recently also learned that at least two pregnant young people in our juvenile halls may be eligible to transfer to Campus Kilpatrick under probation's depopulation plan. Pregnancy, of course, is a critical time for physical and mental health, and that's especially true for young people in our justice system. As probation and stakeholders have yet to prepare Kilpatrick for these moves, we learned that DHS has not yet fully staffed nursing services there. I believe Dr. Galley is here. DHS expects to have round-the-clock nursing in place within the next few weeks, but that's not the reality today. And yet, young people were moved to Campus Kilpatrick yesterday. That brings us to a read-in motion that I have and concerns that we need to confront directly. So we know that the young people in our justice system often face significant health disparities. So why would we move these youth, especially pregnant, high-risk youth, into a facility we already know doesn't have continuous medical support?
Those youth were not moved to Kilpatrick.
Well, can we, I want to hear from Dr. Galley, actually. Because DHS, that Sheila.
Is this on? Thank you. Christina Galley, Director of Health Services. It's accurate that we're not yet fully staffed 24/7 at Kilpatrick. We anticipate being able to onboard the additional nurse registry within about a month. We had a little bit of registry lined up, but unfortunately, at least for one or two of the staff that were on registry, they delayed their start dates due to a variety of personal issues. So we will not have the nighttime staffing for nursing at that particular site until late November, and because of the holiday, we think more likely early December. We do have two shifts of nurse staffing at Kilpatrick. We have the day shift and the evening shift, but it's that overnight shift that we don't have yet. The two youth that you mentioned supervisor, one is in her first trimester of pregnancy, the other is in her second trimester of pregnancy. Neither has known complications in pregnancy. So far, they are healthy pregnancies. We would recommend that nurse staffing be available onsite 24/7, just in case something does happen, particularly given the geographic isolation of that particular site and how far it is to get transported to alternative medical care if something were to happen. But we don't necessarily have any specific concrete concerns about the specific health conditions of the two youth in question that would cause us to have more extreme concerns if they were to be transported. But I will defer to the probation representative about the timing of the particular transfer of those two youth.
So is there no one at DHS who can be there now? We have to hire new?
We don't have extra staffing at night for individuals that are trained in those particular environments, and we are not able to onboard county employed staff within those particular timelines. So we are often dependent on nurse registry staffing. We have a tough time recruiting nurses to work in JCHS, in juvenile court health services. The environment is often challenging. They do not receive the correctional bonus that our staff in correctional health services get, and so we often have some onboarding challenges, and we often rely on nurse registry.
So even though there's a declared state of emergency, that can't help you bring people on faster?
It doesn't, the declared state of emergency makes the hiring process work faster, but it doesn't necessarily identify people who are willing to work for the wages that are offered within the county in the environment in which they're asked to work. So we have a disproportionate number of nursing in JCHS that are registry versus county staff because of those challenges.
So knowing that those are the challenges, and apparently there's no way to work around them, why would we move young people there now without those services onsite?
We are not moving those two youth.
But the young people who will come to, who will come to Campus Kilpatrick also do not have, do not have health services onsite. Is that correct?
Yes, they do. Just not overnight.
Well, I think that it feels to me like we're rushing this move weeks before necessary staffing will be in place. And I think, you know, I would just say fundamentally, why are pregnant youth in our custody at all? But our responsibility is to provide the best care to young people who are in our system, and that's why I am bringing forward a motion today to report back on the steps being taken to ensure that no pregnant youth are transferred to Campus Kilpatrick until 24/7 nursing coverage is fully operational, and to report back regularly on the efforts to identify safe, supportive, alternative housing options for pregnant youth in probation's care. I just, I think if we're going to say what our values are, that we're care first, we have to live up to that and making sure that when we say we are centering care, we have to actually mean it, especially for our most vulnerable young people entrusted to us. So the motion reads, "Our probation department is in the midst of ongoing staffing crisis, determinations of unsuitability, and the threat of being placed under a court-ordered receivership, court-ordered depopulation demands, and an ongoing stipulated judgment, which prompted this board to proclaim a local emergency. Despite these and many other efforts, the crisis is ongoing. Because of this crisis, back in June, I asked several questions specifically designed to ensure that the probation department and other county stakeholders were doing everything they could to ensure quality and wherever possible, non-custodial care for pregnant youth in our justice system. And to my disappointment, I recently learned that not only are there currently two pregnant youth in custody, but also that little progress has been made from the concerns raised in this board's June 3, 2025 meeting. Among the concerns raised in June were Kilpatrick's distance from emergency medical care and the options being in Ventura County 15 miles away, or in Los Angeles County 24 miles away or more, and with regular prenatal and postnatal care expected to take place at LA General Medical Center, some 45 miles away. At that meeting, Dr. Galley specifically said that to serve the population, DHS would need to add staff to be able to provide around-the-clock care. To date, DHS does not currently have the staff, as we've heard, available to provide those services. We have a legal, and I would say a moral obligation, to care for pregnant youth in our custody. In the very least, we have a duty to do everything we can to reduce the risk of negative outcomes of stressors that may cause them or their child harm. We need to do all we can so we're not adding trauma upon trauma for the pregnant youth in our care. Because we cannot yet guarantee 24/7 around-the-clock nursing care at Campus Kilpatrick, and because of that facility's distance for available emergency medical care, it is my strong view that pregnant youth should not be housed there at all. I therefore move that the Board of Supervisors, one, direct the chief probation officer in collaboration with the Department of Mental Health and Department of Health Services to report back verbally at the next regular board meeting and in writing at every regular board meeting thereafter, as long as there are pregnant youth in custody, on the specific steps taken to secure alternative housing for pregnant youth in probation's care in collaboration with relevant county stakeholders as appropriate, including the Department of Children and Family Services, public defender, alternate public defender, and district attorney. And two, direct the chief probation officer to report back in writing at the next regular board meeting with a copy of the probation department's policies on pregnant youth, their care in custody, and any policies governing paths to divert, decarcerate, or provide them with alternative housing outside of the custodial environment. I think with the challenges that are facing our probation department, I know our chair has not required that this department present at every meeting, but I am deeply concerned about the challenges that our young people continue to face. And every day they are not getting programming, every day that they continue to sustain these, you know, sustain themselves in these very challenged conditions, we are putting them further at risk, not helping them get to safety. And I just, I'm incredibly disappointed with where we are, and I'll leave it there. And I'll leave it there.
Thank you Supervisor Hahn.
It's hard to follow. Thank you very much. I'm going to start by saying I am disappointed that Mr. Vera Rosa is not here today. I understand that there was a hearing apparently on Friday that maybe he's preparing for. But honestly, when I sit here and look at all the department heads who march out here every time we have a probation item, from DYD to our Department of Mental Health, to our Superintendent of Education, to our Director of Public Health, Health Services, ISD, human resources, the fact that they're all here, and I got to believe their departments are pretty massive and pretty, pretty demanding. And for them to take their time out of their day to be here and not have our Chief Probation Officer here, I think is, is unfortunate and, you know, feels a little disrespectful. And as you can tell, I mean, we are basically motioning probation department to death because we don't feel like what we say in these meetings is landing anywhere. And so we feel like we have to motion, motion, motion. And that's, you know, really not the best use of our time either. And unfortunately Supervisor Horvath, I'm, I'm supportive of your motion, but this is a department that basically ignores our motions. Right? The last emergency order, we added the amendment that the Chief Probation Officer show up once a week to Los Pedrinos, which according to my spies, that is not happening. We also, my staff reminded me that we included that the Chief Probation Officer show up at every oversight, probation oversight meeting, as well as the Board of Supervisors meeting where they have a presentation. Not every meeting, but the ones where, where probation has a presentation. So they kind of ignore our motions. So good luck on this one. But I, I will be supporting it. You know, it just feels like we, we jump from crisis to crisis in this form. And may I say to all the departments that again, show up here every time and are ready and willing to work with this department. We appreciate you. I don't think we're doing that with any other department. And the fact that you're all so willing to really lean in to this troubled department and add whatever you can to support the young people who are incarcerated, I really appreciate that. I think from the very first time, Michael, when I look at you, I think about how ISD and other departments worked around the clock to get Los Pedrinos ready to be populated in a very short time. And that's the first time I realized, wow, this really is a county family that leans in to where there is trouble and leans in to where there is a need. And I look at HR, both you, Johann and Lisa, for how you have really tried to be creative as it relates to hiring of probation staff. I appreciate that as well. But it just feels like, you know, we're all sort of dragging probation along. And we're, we're not getting the leadership that, that we, we need and we want and those young people deserved. So having said that, let me just ask a question Sheila, about the new predisposition unit at Berry J. And I think it does speak to programming a little bit, but we've heard there's been fights and inconsistent staffing in the unit. And I have concerns about inconsistent staffing on a lot of levels, but we do know it leads to poor rapport with the youth, which probably can lead to more fighting. So how many of the staff assigned and deployed to that unit are consistently there?
Sorry Supervisor, I, I'm unable to answer that question, but what I can tell you is that prior to opening up CVK for the housing of the female population, staff assigned to CVK, which was approximately 60, were reassigned to Berry J to assist with the influx of the population there. And they remained on there, assigned there to assist with oversight of the youth that were brought in from the SYTF recommended tract from LP. So, but I cannot say whether or not they show up every day, whether or not they come to work every day, and what their assignments are specifically, but I can give you that information.
Okay. I think that, I think it's important. And I just will lean into what's been said about the programming. I also feel like programming is not where it should be at Los Pedrinos and Berry J. And I, I know, I, I met with, with our Chief Probation Officer yesterday and brought up programming. And again, he said he's going to get me the list. He said, I think you would be shocked at how many programs we actually have. But I think we're all sort of feeling, on paper, it may look good, but when we go out there and when we talk to people, it's, it's limited. And as you know, we got dinged by BSCC specifically on programming being listed as something we offer, but then when they went out to check, it really wasn't happening at the time we said it was. And I have a question about that. We did, as a result of that, I believe we did a motion that asked our Auditor Controller to evaluate the way probation oversees, monitors, and reports on programs and activities, specifically at Los Pedrinos. The Board in probation received the audit from the Auditor Controller in September of last year, and it included 17 recommendations. But four months later, when the Auditor Controller approached probation department to follow up information on how those recommendations had been implemented, they received no response. In fact, I'm told that from February all the way to just last Friday, they did not get any answers to the questions they were asking. No data, no information, no response to their questions for eight months. And then happened to be the Auditor Controller physically bumped into Guillermo and brought it up, to which he cited he had no knowledge that that had been asked of probation. And said, of course, he was going to get a response as soon as possible, but on further, he did get the response in apparently, but it was inadequate. And it really wasn't what the Auditor Controller, and you know, this again, county family, right? We, we asked our own Auditor Controller, hey, can you audit this? And then usually, the point of audit, you know, auditing things is not punitive. It's like, hey, how can we work together? How can we make this better? It's not a gotcha kind of procedure. But in the eight months trying to say, hey, can we work together? Can we, can we do something better? Nothing. Sheila, do you have any reasoning why the probation department refused to give them what they had asked for?
No refusal Supervisor. So once again, as you know, as you mentioned, BSCC came out and did an audit of our programming. And we also have to do a corrective action plan and respond to that. We also have DOJ provisions related to programming that we have to respond to and address. We also received recommendations from POC with respect to programming that we had to address. So then you add on top of that 17 recommendations from the Auditor Controller. What staff was trying to do was reconcile all the different corrective action plans that we have from those four entities. So whether we can see at a glance whether or not that they conflict, whether or not they merge, whether or not they are addressing the same issues and or overlap. So we did respond to the auditor as on Friday, as you mentioned. And the only thing that was missing that he asked for was the supporting documentation, which we are gathering for him right now.
Right.
But it's just a matter of several different entities providing recommendations on the same topic that leads to a lot of chaos and confusion.
But you know, I think out of respect for our Auditor Controller, a simple response saying that.
I believe we did.
I don't think so. Supervisor Barker, did you want to jump in on this one?
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you have that many recommendations and they're not responding to the Auditor Controller, who's ever over-programming at Berry-Nidor, should be moved to somewhere where they can handle what they're doing. Because obviously, if that's happening, what else? And I keep saying that. And Sheila, you know me. I've had it. And what's being put on paper is a lie. It's not happening. And, you know, as far as I'm, I'm going to call it out like I see it. And the fact that you have to sit there and say that there were recommendations, corrective action, and then the Water Controller had 14 more, should be a wake-up call to the administration that whoever they have overseeing things at Berry-Nidor either should be called on the mat or moved.
Understand.
Yeah. And I, again, I'm not shooting the messenger, but I am frustrated.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I mean, I've had it for a while, so I'm glad that you, you finally had it. You know, the, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, you know, and I'm sure David, you know too, and I really appreciate how much you are, I see you at Los Pedrinos, and I'm sure you're elsewhere, but I just want to thank you so much for spending so much time there with the young people who are incarcerated. I think you've come to be a trusted person, and I really appreciate that. I'm interested in giving more programming to DYD, and I'm going to maybe bring something forward that speaks to that. But one of the things I have come to learn is I, some of the nonprofits that are working under contract, I'm thinking specifically of Hoops for Justice, and you know them. And you, you could probably speak to the work that they do. Can you speak to the work that they do?
Sure. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. So while we don't work with that specific organizations contractually.
But you know them.
Interface, right? And, and we are in community with them. They work with young people on recreation, specifically basketball, but there's also a journaling component, a leadership development component. They've written program design for mentoring programs within the facilities, as well as a legislative component. They've written a couple pieces of potential legislation.
Yeah.
On how young people could be served who were facing potential transfer hearings into the adult system.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I'm impressed with when we go out there, they have really worked to mentor some of the young people in terms of being facilitators at some of the meetings that I participate in. And it's really a lot of good work. I'm mentioning them because they, right now, are in a couple units at Los Pedrinos. They would like to expand to the S-units in Los Pedrinos. They would also like to, and by the way, a judge has actually had a court order that says they should be allowed in Berry J to follow the young people that they have got a relationship with them. I mean, they are the ultimate credible messengers. The young people trust them, they listen to them. And now that we've shifted, I think almost 40 of our Los Pedrinos young people to Berry J, they, and again, a judge agrees, they should follow them and continue the momentum and the work that they're doing. But they have now been, I want to say it's a year and a half, they've been trying to expand their contract in Los Pedrinos and attempt to, to move into Berry J. They have hit one obstacle after another. I did bring this up yesterday with, with Guillermo, and I think he's going to look into it, but I just really wanted to bring that up to you. I think it's things like that. When we do have things that are working, we really want to lean in. And if there's any way we can expand or have them move to another facility, particularly if our young people are moving to another facility, really would like that to be a priority in the department. And whatever you need, if the Board needs to do something to expedite that, I think we're willing to do that. But that has been, it's a problem. And would just like you to really elevate that. Did you want to have something to say about that?
No. And I think that I've had conversations with your justice deputy regarding the Hoops for Justice contract.
Yeah.
But we'll follow up again on it.
Yeah, thank you. So just one more thing. Looks like the recruit turnover rate has decreased this year. That means that more of our recruits are staying in the job after graduating from the Academy, which is good. Have you talked to them? What do you think is the, is leading to this lower turnover rate? And is that something we should lean into more?
So one of the things we mentioned last time during our presentation is that we've started an institution training program where we staff them up with somebody who has experience running a living unit in order to mentor them during their, upon their graduation from the academy. That process started back in July, but we were also doing some shadowing, bringing folks in before they actually leave the academy so they can get a good working understanding of what the working conditions are inside the facility. And then we also started a program where we have them all graduate and then are assigned to the same unit together. And that way, they feel that same camaraderie, they can all learn together and grow together. So we think that that's some of the helpful things that led to the retention.
That, that's really good. In terms of the staff that's worked for your department for longer periods of time, and again, I didn't totally follow the slide, but did you mention, are you seeing them leave the department at higher rates than normal, or is their turnover about normal?
I think the attrition rate has definitely increased due to some of the shifting and requiring of the field officers to start working in the institution. So we are seeing an increased rate, and folks just simply retiring and, and leaving the department early.
Right. So is there anything we can do to incentivize them? Obviously, if you move out of the country, right, or you're retiring, that's your prerogative. Is there anything we can do to keep those who have been with our department, as long as we, these are the ones we want to keep? Is there, is there something we should do to keep them?
Yeah, I mean, we could work with DHR and try to determine what some strategies are that we can to retain our existing staff. But that's something we can look at.
Because staffing continues to be a problem.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Carroll.
May I make just one comment, or do I have time?
Yes, you may.
Okay, super quick. I just wanted to highlight, outside of the work that probation is working on individually, collectively, with probation, with the juvenile bench, with the defense attorneys, the DA, we are still working on decarceration efforts, and several young people have been released into the RAY program. And one of the most exciting recent developments is that 17 girls or gender expansive youth are currently under review to find out if they are eligible for, for release. About half of them have been assigned to one of our community-based partners to review their individual cases, go to court, find out where they live, their zip codes, et cetera. And the other half have been assigned to the RAY program for follow-up. So we're really hopeful that of that population of 17, it'll result in some young people being returned to community.
Thank you Supervisor Horvath.
Thank you for that information. It's incredibly helpful. I would just say, you know, Sheila, I don't know if you intended, if you knew you were going to be the presenter today or not, but I would just ask that, especially since we've been canceling some of these meetings, you know, getting this information is critical, especially as we're in courts and, you know, desperate to make progress. So making sure that whomever can answer the questions about what's actually going on and what our experiences have been is, is, to have that person here is very important. So I, I, I think we just need to under, have an understanding of where that, why there's such a disconnect, and who's making the calls on what is and isn't happening in our, in our halls. And I, I think, I can only imagine how frustrated people are who have been advocating to us about getting our young people, especially our, our girls, out of the facilities. You know, everything that they've been advocating for, it feels like, you know, in this conversation today, the takeaway is they're not even sure what the leadership knows about what's going on day to day. And that is also unacceptable. So I, I just want to make sure that if the chief isn't going to be here, that whoever is in that seat knows what's going on day to day. So you can, I mean, the fact that there was a significant move at Campus Kilpatrick yesterday, you know, and, is concerning to me. And I think the daily operations at what's going on, and what's going on at Berry J, which are supposed to be the solution to our problems at LP, that's also a concern. So I just want to make sure that we're actually able to move the needle when we do have these conversations.
Understand. And just so you know, the chief, as well as Acting Chief Deputy Arcos, both were always planned to be here along with myself. However, as County Council can attest to, the DOJ hearings and trials are taking much more of our time than we anticipated. We're now scheduled to be there, I think, every two weeks going forward. So we initially thought the first hearing, we would all be able to testify and that would conclude. However, we are now scheduled to go back the 7th, the 21st, and every two weeks thereafter. And so the chief also is prepping for Judge Espinosa hearing on November 13th. And so the chief also is prepping for Judge Espinosa hearing on November 13th. So his next board meeting, I'm sure both of them will be present along with me...
Yeah.
...to answer any questions you may have.
Understood, and it sounds like the court's doing what we've been doing in terms of trying to call, you know, call people and have the conversation that we've been trying to have here.
Right.
And so when, you know, if that's not helping us progress, then, you know, and if we know that they're going to have to attend to those meetings, and we have to be able to make sure that the county operation is able to understand what's going on as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also want to thank you for being here. When the request came to continue this, I was an adamant no, because my greatest fear is that something is going to happen, second continuance on this item, and the more I learn, and believe me, I have tried to work with the department, but my patience has run out. And so I thank you for sitting in the hot seat and answering the questions, and you're going to get follow-up to the questions that were asked, but I'm putting, again, especially Berry Nidor staff on notice that we are watching. And I know that the probation chief hired someone new out of Berry Nidor, correct? I got an announcement last week. So I hope that that individual makes changes. And I hope that the programming on paper is actually practice in real life, because like you, I've seen it in writing. It's not happening. So with that, thank you all for being here. Does anyone want to add anything? Are you afraid, Lisa? No, you're good. No, I meant Lisa Wong, she's going like this. No. Anyway, thank you all for being here, appreciate it, Sheila, for coming and representing the department. Is the active officer?
Okay. Madam Chair, there are no in-person speakers that have signed up for this item. We will go to remote speakers. Caller 850305, please state your name, your line is unmuted.
Yes, my name is Jason, I'm a Spokane viewer. So the other day, I'm down on a figure over this chick, and I paid her $5, let me see in her hand...
Sir, you are off-topic. This is item 50, status of probation, next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Caller 818645, your line is unmuted, please state your name and begin.
Yes, it's Eric Prevenant. Thank you for this exhausting dressing down of the probation department, and I share the concern that they're not present, but the problem is we've given so many edicts and motions and orders and directives, that what's missing is what I recommended a year ago, which is the Supervisor Mitchell's office, Supervisor Solis, Supervisor Horvath, Barker, and, yes, correct, the last one, have I mentioned them all? Anyway, should have sent a deputy weekly to make sure that these programs are happening, because the idea that we're paying for these programs, these programs are scheduled and nothing is happening is terrible. It's also worth remembering that these are kids who shouldn't be there for very long. Remember paragraph, I think it was 73, let them go, depopulate. I don't know, I understand people are afraid and it's dangerous, and thank you, Horvath, for looking into the pregnant youth. Of course, they deserve fair and reasonable conditions, but 24/7 nursing care is not necessary to be pregnant...
Thank you.
...in my opinion.
Roy Humphries, your line is unmuted, please begin.
Yes, we have this proverbial situation, so first off, a salzer, you must go to a receivership status immediately, as should men send for jail, and for a timely change, and because as you pointed out, you cannot trust the structure that you have. It's a failed structure, and it has been for decades, and you're spending millions on illegals, and you can't maintain the essential structures that we need for this type of correction situation, and corrections must be taken, adults' corrections must be taken away from the Sheriff's Department to be a separate department, period. And again, as long as you're expecting the den of thieves to make a change, come on, get over it. You people need to wake up and get this job done. We need to bring in outside people to clean up this garbage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Hérez, your line is open, please begin. Please begin. Claudia Hérez, please begin.
Yes, DPS says 10 years, DWC, 3 years. I am happy to hear that these programs could be working, might be working, but I really want to find out, and I would like to know, how are these programs aligned with these youth coming out from these programs, from these facilities, and aligned to meet societal standards, and appropriately become part of the scenario of our society? I want to find that out, how are these programs aligned with that particular objective? Because ultimately, the objective is for them to come out and be a part of society, and work well with society, and become the leaders that they will be in the future. So that is my comment, I will look into that. I feel that that is something very necessary for these programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller, please state your name, your line is unmuted.
Yes, Elder Watson Diggs. My question is, is the Board of Supervisors still responsible for making all county leadership appointments? And if so, what are you waiting for? I share the frustration, but what are you waiting for? That's all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes public comment on this item. The report will be received and filed.